Oh hi, it's me Alan Gerting. I'm older than Pac-Man, yet younger than Pong. I'm in my 40s. Previously on Too Many Games in a Room, we discussed two essential criteria to use when thinning your board game collection: sentimentality and/or playability. Well, on today's episode, we're going to apply those two concepts to old-school games. Games from my past, my childhood if you will. As you can see here, these are games in my in-wall game shelf. One of 14 game shelves that I have. Because of the size, this is where I keep most of my old-school games. Yeah, apparently a lot of old-school games are rather tall. The first step in trying to keep or call, save or sell each of these old-school games, is to place them on my game table for further inspection. Now you can see, once I moved these games from my game shelf onto my game table, there wasn't a lot of room on the table. These games are just all over each other. It's almost like some orgy and the only people that got an invite to this party were the games from my past. Once I took all these games onto my game table, you could already see that it's leaving huge gaps in my primary game shelf. Certainly, if I were to get rid of all of these old-school games, I'd be well on my way to thinning my game collection. But I don't want to get rid of all of these old-school games, no! I need to really rank them on the two criteria we previously discussed in episode 2: sentimentality and playability. Of course, since they're old-school games, they're already gonna tickle the sentimentality. So what we're really gonna be looking at in today's episode to keep or call is the playability. I have to ask myself, what is the likelihood that these games will see the light of day? How often will we play them, bringing joy into our lives? You may be asking yourself, how do I know which games are from my childhood and which ones are new? How are you organizing these? Well, there's a couple of key ways. One is my own memory. I remember playing this as a kid. For instance, here's the game Pit. This obviously is an old game for a couple of reasons. First of all, phew, it is dirty and old. It has a styrofoam back, but it also has a name Parker Brothers. Now Parker Brothers is no longer around. It has been absorbed by Hasbro.
There can be only one.
Here's another game, Spider Wars.
Ah, I've got a creepy new game! Spider Wars!
Spider Wars, I know is old because it's from Milton Bradley. Milton Bradley used to be a very common company, but it was absorbed by Hasbro. There can only be one. Here's Yahtzee, another example of an old-school game. This game has been around forever, but its original company was Parker Brothers, now absorbed by Hasbro. There can only be one. Man, in that battle of Parker Brothers versus Milton Bradley, the winner was Hasbro. Vampire Hunter the Game. The box looks slightly used, but I know it's old-school 'cause boom! There's Milton Bradley again. The company tells you a lot of information. Another thing that tells you information is if there's old commercials.
There's a brand-new game with a brand-new board and many sides where perils are stored. Key to the Kingdom, from Waddington's.
Oh, the Key to the Kingdom? Here's another giveaway. Who published Key to the Kingdom? Key to the Kingdom was by Golden in America, the Waddingtons in the UK. What the heck is Golden? I've never even heard of that company. I had to look it up in BGG, BoardGameGeek.com, and man, that company is defunct. From my knowledge, I can't find many other games. Thunder Road, yet another classic. I remember this from my youth, but another telltale sign that it is old-school? The good old red and blue. A Milton Bradley up in the corner, right there. You can also tell because the box looks old. Although, not as old as that pit box looked with its styrofoam back and out-of-fashion people. Oh, here's another game, etcetera. Sometimes games look way newer and you remember them from your childhood. So you do have to flip it over and look at the back for the publishing year. And here you can see 2009. Well, that's not a year that qualifies it for old-school nostalgia. But then wait, 1985. It was originally published... Gotcha! It looked new, but it was actually old. We call that a relaunch if you will. It's kind of a rebranding. This isn't the only example of this. It happens all the time. For instance, let's look at Dungeon, a classic game originally published in 1975 by TSR. But this clearly isn't a box or a game from 1975. This looks like it was just released in the last couple of years, and it was. But not by TSR, no. This was released by Wizards of the Coast. So there's plenty of different editions of games. So even though this is a newer version, I still consider it a game from my past. So now that we have some generic criteria for what are old-school games, I need to divide this up, slice it up into easy-to-identify categories. So the first category is games before I was born. Right here, you're looking at games that predate myself and many people that I know. Now, how do I decide if I'm going to keep, call, save, sell? Trash, treasure, whatever you wanna call it. And I thought the most entertaining way to do this is to do it Tinder-style. We're gonna swipe left to get rid of, or swipe right to keep. Ooh, we're attracted to you. You deserve a swipe right. Uh, ugly, swipe left. Okay, it's time to look at these games individually and for me to go to the crappy live audio instead of this voiceover I've been doing. We're gonna start with the game Pit. Look at that faux wood paneling table. That is not real wood. But this hits the table all the ding-dang time. I love the fact it doesn't even have an official back. And it even has that old-school orange bell in it. I love it, and I play it, and it really tickles that nostalgia taint that I love so much. This is definitely a swipe. Alright, this is the game Ubi? Never even heard of it. Pretty sure it was around before I was born, or at least as I was born. I tried looking for the date on the back. I can't even figure out which way it aligns. Am I supposed to put this... Oh, I guess I'd put it like this. It's one of my pet peeves. Inside, comes with a lot of pyramid things, cool plastic pieces, question cards, the world according to Ubi. And I look, and it says 1986. So this was around after I was born. But I've never played it, no idea what it's like. Probably never will play it. It looks very Trivial Pursuit-esque, but I have no nostalgia behind it except I think it was a gift from my cousin Scott, who came across it and said, "Hey, this is a weird old game. Maybe it'd be good for your collection." So will I keep this? Putting it in? The reject pile, swipe left. So here's an example with some overlap because it's also still in its shrink wrap. So I'll do a Shelf of Shame episode to see which games are still in their shrink wrap. I'm gonna put a pin in it and say, "We'll leave that for later." For right now, we're just gonna go ahead and ignore. Look at this old piece of shit. Acquire. It has that bookshelf version, so it has that nice binding. That way, when it's on your shelf, it looks like a book, which is a big plus. I wish all board games did that. In fact, maybe I should do that with our games that we publish. But this thing is so old that my dad played it with his dad. It's one of the few board games my father actually told me about and said, "Do you have a choir?" Because that was my favorite games, playing with my parents as a kid. It's so old, it's falling apart. But because of the nostalgia factor that it has a connection with my father and even my grandfather, you best believe this swipe right. Alright, here's an interesting one. Go for Broke. This was the inverse of Monopoly. If you look at it, it's not about getting the most money. It's about losing all of your money. Kinda like Brewster's Millions, that Richard Pryor movie. Spend a million. You can see, I got this at a flea market for just seven dineros. Pretty nice. Black and white board, looks old. I'm not sure if it's older than me or not. It's from one of these random companies I've never heard of. Well, who the heck is Shallow and Richter? Shallow and Richter, no idea. I've never played it. I don't think I ever will. It's an interesting concept, but I already have a strong feeling that the rules are dated. Swipe left. Candy Land. There's so many ding-dang versions. I think I'd be best just getting rid of this thing. Arguably, this isn't even a game because there's no decisions to make. You could play on autopilot. However, I have my own variant house rule that I came up with, and I call it Candy Not So Bland. And if you're really interested, let me know, and I can give you more details on it. This one is one of the more classic boards that went with it. But you could buy this anytime, and it's one of these games that, should every household have a version of Candy Land? I'm not sure. It's tempting for me to just get rid of this, but at the same time, if I ever have little dinky kids and they see Candy Land, it's an opportunity for me to teach them Candy Not So Bland. Candy Land? Yeah, I think we should swipe left in the garbage, but no one's gonna buy this thing, so we'll swipe right. Ah, yes, Clue. A game that most families have? Should every family own it? I'm not sure. This is an interesting one because it is a bookcase edition, which I love, but I don't like the bookcase edition that it is because not many books look like this. It looks like a soft-bound book cover. I should say, binding in a hardcover case. It doesn't look as classy as it could. This was a gift from my mom, but look, shrink wrap, so you know what that means. That means we're saving it for the Shelf of Shame episode where we look at all the unopened games. Save for later. Trivial Pursuit for Juniors. I fucking hate Trivial Pursuit. Twister. Every home should have it. It can turn dirty, it's ridiculous, it's controversial. Swipe right. Alright, so this is The Simpsons: Monopoly. Got this in the year 2000. This was actually my roommate's, Nate Spurrier's, version of The Simpsons. And he left it behind when he moved out. Now, Monopoly is not as bad as a lot of gamers give it credit for. It actually is pretty good if you follow the actual rules so it doesn't take forever, and there's a speed die, and I think that's my point. I don't need the Simpsons version. This probably won't resell very well. But I think what I'd like is a bookcase edition with a speed die, and then we'd actually play it. It wouldn't just be something on the wall. So Nate, you can come pick this up whenever you want because I'm swiping left with this one. All the King's Men. Some type of counter to chess by Parker Brothers. If you look at this, it has nice pieces to it on this game board. Tells you how the pieces move. But even though these pieces look wooden, in reality, they're frickin' plastic! They're plastic, man! Look at these things. Will I ever play it? Nope! Because why would I play that? When I could just play chess. And there's plenty of fancy versions of chess. Have you ever watched the movie Queen's Gambit? Or the miniseries Queen's Gambit? That did a great job of selling chess. I was one of the many people that bought a chess set for my wife 'cause she got interested and wanted to play. Swiping left. Therapy. This is a game I never heard of, but my mom bought it for me for Christmas, one of those classic, "You like games? Here's a game, Therapy." Because I'm also a psychologist. I should open it up, see if it's any good. Let's look at some of these examples here. Let's see, and this one says, "What percentage of Americans believe in a god of some sort?" I don't know what that has to do with therapy. "Is the average man happier with his spouse at age 40 or 70?" This is really dated, and I think this would be an interesting timepiece to look at and laugh at one evening to open up. But again, this is already in its shrink wrap, so we're gonna put this in the "to be continued" because I wanna have a Shelf of Shame episode. So with that in mind, "to be continued." So the end result of that was in-between, "To Be Continued" is Yahtzee and Therapy, getting rid of Ubi, Go for Broke, All the King's Men, Simpsons: Monopoly, Trivial Pursuit: Junior, and keeping Candy Land, Twister, Acquire, Clue, and Pit. But you know what? After thinking about it a little bit, I don't know why I'd hold on to Candy Land. Next up, we have the games I definitely remember playing as a kid. When I was in grade school, I definitely played one of these games, so that means I have a personal connection and a personal story to each of these games. Or at least, admittedly, I vaguely remember playing these or heard of other people playing these games. These games are definitely at the oldest mid-'90s. Start with Mindtrap. Mindtrap, classic game of astronaut questions, as we used to call them. Literally, this game is nothing but question cards, and there's some scoring mechanism that I've never used, but it just has these cards that have these questions that have a yes or no answer to them. Or I should say, you ask yes-or-no questions, and then you're supposed to figure out the story. Now, contemporary-wise, there's a game very similar to this by Z-Man Games called Dark Stories. Dark Stories, same gosh darn thing. And Dark Stories has a much smaller box, not as many cards, has a little bit of artwork to it, but also is much quicker and less detailed. So it's like the quick version of Mindtrap. So this is tough because I wanna not be a hoarder and I wanna free up shelf space. What do I choose? Do I choose Mindtrap? Do I choose Dark Stories? Which of these do I keep? Well, there's a lot more sentimentality with Mindtrap, and there's a lot more questions in there as well. And there's other things I may wanna do with the Mindtrap game, so I may just reduce, get rid of the box and keep only the cards. I don't know, but I'm gonna... I'm gonna swipe right. Will I keep Dark Stories? Yeah, probably those two. It's just like a library. It's something that's worth passing down from generation to generation. You know what? I've changed my mind because all of these you can just look up online if you want to, or you're gonna have the best ones already compiled into Dark Stories. So I've changed my mind. I'm gonna go ahead and swipe left. Alright, here's a big one! Crossfire! I can't even frickin' fit it. You gotta scroll up with the camera, it's so big. Crossfire! Or as I like to call it, your mom freaks out because you ruined the vacuum cleaner because this thing is just full of marbles. It's an action game that you just shoot these little things in the middle trying to get them into your opponent's goal. Can you shoot the purple with your metal marbles and win? Crossfire! I bought this at Toys R Us when it was going out of business, and I bought it for the nostalgia sake. But I haven't even opened it. Is this just a waste of money? You know what? This is actually, even though it's not in shrink wrap, should belong in the Shelf of Shame. So maybe I'll stick a pin in this one and do it next time. Key to the Kingdom. This one has this very clever, classic mechanic where when you leave a part of the board, it folds. So this board gets put together, and it actually folds. So if you go down the whirlpool, you go into a different place. And now you're there teleporting. A very interesting, clever mechanic. So it definitely has that je ne sais quoi, that it factor, and it has a lot of sentimentality because it's just classic. This really is the creme de la creme of artwork. Would I play it again? Here's the thing, it's been so long since I've played it, I don't even remember playing it. Oh, this is one that's really tough and on the fence. What do you think? Should I keep it or not? Man, I just wanna postpone it, but I think I'm going to swipe right. It's just too cool not to. It's too cool! Jitters, also in shrink wrap. I've never played it. I got it at a flea market for one stinking dollar. One stinking dollar. But it looks like a word game, and word games are typically pretty fun. But it's in shrink wrap, so you know what that means. Save it for the Shelf of Shame episode. Taboo. Who hasn't played Taboo at some family reunion Thanksgiving dinner? This is basically, "Let's see how angry grandpa can get", or that overly competitive uncle.
You don't act right, you're not part of the family!
But here's the real question. Taboo, keep or get rid of? A lot of classic versions, but here's a story about Taboo. The original Taboo, it didn't have the forbidden words. You try to get your team to say what the word is. It's kinda like catchphrase. But there's forbidden words. In the original version, the opponents got to make up those forbidden words. And that's where trap words comes into play, a more contemporary version. They're very similar in that you try to get your teammates to guess a word, but in trap words, you get to make up the trap words. The words that eh get the players to lose the round. So why would I keep Taboo when I have trap words? The answer is, I wouldn't. Swipe left. Dungeon. A lot of people compliment Dungeon as inspiring a whole genre of games. It's basically Dungeons and Dragons simplified into a board game version. This one does have the incredible art, but here's the problem. When I play it, I realize it is very dated. Like many movies and stories, it hasn't aged well because there's a lot of better alternatives. I think the only reason really to play this game is for this nostalgia reason, or to educate yourself as a board game designer as to the genesis of a lot of game components and inspiration. But I already got my inspiration from this. I've played it and think there's better games nowadays to play. So with that in mind, I'm gonna swipe left in hopes that someone else gets the inspiration I got from Dungeon. Labyrinth. Classic game. It's why I love Ravensburger. Give you a quick story. We had a German foreign exchange student. I was only eight years of age at the time. She came over and gave us das Reketik Labyrinth, the German version of Labyrinth. This game still holds up to this day. It's very elegant, very simple rules, very addictive gameplay. You basically have a board, and you have images that you're supposed to capture on the board, and you get to them by sliding and then moving your character. So you have to be very creative and intelligent on how you slide the board around. This has a lot of nostalgia. The original copy that our foreign exchange student bought us is at my childhood home still, but I bought my own version just because I still like playing it this day. This is a hard swipe right for me. Lot of sentimentality, lot of playability. Boom, shakalaka! Et cetera. It's Tic-Tac-Toe, where there's always a winner, there's never a cats game. It's a clever variation of Tic-Tac-Toe, but in the end, you're playing Tic-Tac-Toe. This was the first variant of Scrabble that I played as a kid and I liked. I was horrible at Scrabble, but I was decent at Upwards because with Upwards, you can do a lot more with short words, which as an almost illiterate kid growing up, I was able to do because you just build on top of already-built words. So it adds that third dimension to Scrabble. It's pretty good stuff. Would I still play it nowadays? It does have some nostalgia to it because I remember playing with my friend Marta Dvorsnik at the lake. And as a kid, I felt smarter because I was playing a word game. But will it hold up for today's standards? Now, I'd probably, as an adult, rather play Scrabble, and I wouldn't wanna torture a kid by forcing them to play Upwards. It would be totally self-indulgent. Knockout. Still in its shrink wrap. I got this from Half Price Books for 25 bucks? No, I got it for like a couple dollars. I did have this as a kid. No idea what happened to it. It's one of those classic examples of, where the heck do your games go as a kid? Because I don't remember getting rid of it. But it's still in its shrink wrap, so you know what that means. It means, till next time. But here's a little reward if you're a viewer and you're placing bets on whether I swipe left or swipe right. That one's totally going left because Jenga's so much better. Spider Wars. I played this so much with my cousin Amanda up in my bedroom. We loved it. It made us feel smart because it was like chess for little kids in that you had options. You had to get your spider to your opponent's nest. But you could also pop out your opponent's spiders by stepping where they're stepping and pushing them off. Oh, you could create a dangler there! It was a lot of fun. Would I still play it? I kinda do. I kinda still wanna play it with my niece and nephew to see if it holds up. So even though I haven't played it in a long time, it does hold a lot of nostalgia, a lot of sentimentality, and it may have some playability to it. So what am I gonna do? You know what? I'll have my cousin Amanda decide, but I think in the meantime, I'm gonna swipe right and then get rid of it if we don't play with it soon. Yeah, we're keeping this one. and then get rid of it if we don't play with it soon. Yeah, we're keeping this one. Sentimentality wins. So every once in a while, you come across a game that ranks really high in sentimentality and also on playability. Like, it has aged so well that it's a no-brainer. Welcome to Thunder Road, the Ram and Rex Survival Game. This game is so simplistic. It's like Mad Max, the board game. It plays like it. It actually has miniature vehicles, and it has some tactics and strategy to it, where you move, how you place your dice, et cetera, how you use your die rolls, I should say, et cetera. It is choice. This is very easy. Swipe right hard. Here's another huge ass game, the Omegavirus. Classic, right? Now, here's the thing. I got this in a flea market, and it's missing one little piece. One little piece is missing. Now, it should be getting here. Omegavirus, one small piece missing. And that piece missing is, uh, one of these small dudes that are part of it. So you could just replace it with a dime if you really want to, just use your imagination. But it has the electronic talking. Man, there's a lot of nostalgia value to this, for sure. But I remember it being a little too convoluted, not elegant enough to keep on replaying. I would love to play this again, to see if it holds up. However, it's so big, and it takes up so much shelf space, I'm not sure if it would be worth it. If it was worth it, I'd probably already be playing it. So unfortunately, Omegavirus, I'm gonna swipe left, even though I know a lot of people will comment, "What, are you crazy? That's a total swipe right." I'm swiping left for Omegavirus. This is kind of the biggie too. The size of it is a factor, and also, small game piece missing. Aw, man. Bother's me enough to swipe left. What about these games that you alluded to last time? You got Hero Quest, Dragon Strike, Advanced Hero Quest, Warhammer Quest, and it's kind of like this level-up system too. Hero Quest came out, Dragon Strike came out and tried to compete with Hero Quest. It had variable boards, different types of monster variety, had a little bit more role-playing elements, but also came with a VHS tape. What? So good. Advanced Hero Quest was the Games Workshop version of Hero Quest, where it had a module board. And then Warhammer Quest came out. Holy beautiful. All of these take up a lot of shelf space, which is one of the reasons I swiped left for Omegavirus, because you know what I'm doing with these? I love them so much, and I wanna play them again. Even if I don't play these games again, I'm going to be using their miniatures. Swipe right. Oh my god, I'm a hoarder. What am I doing with my life? So to recap, here's my swipe left. Omegavirus, Dungeon, Taboo, Upwards, Mindtrap. And there's the I-don't-knows. Stay tuned till next time. But then I'm keeping Labyrinth, Spider Wars, Key to the Kingdom, and Thunder Road. So last but not least, we have the games that are from the early to late 90s. These are games that are more reminiscent of toys than actual games. Like Gator Golf, for instance. That's a frickin' toy. Alright, Milton Bradley's Vampire Hunter. It's got an old label there. Got this in a flea market. This game has a red-blue light, so that the board looks different based upon what type of lighting. So you could be on a trap during the day, be safe during the night, or vice versa. However, it doesn't work that well, and I think that's really important in games with gimmicks, is that it needs to work. So a lot of times, the lighting wasn't good enough for us to, dang it. Lighting wasn't good enough for us to actually enjoy the game. Plus, the game itself, if you get rid of the gimmick, not that fun of a game. So why do I even own this? I don't know. Let someone else enjoy the gimmick, and the gimmick alone. Alright, this game hasn't aged well at all. I don't even think they still publish it. Here's this unknown company, Golden, once more. This one is for adults. But this game is basically a quiz game where you give clues, and it's, why would you play this when you could play monikers? And the box is too big, as opposed to just having a deck of cards, so swipe left. Dragon Strike. No, not the other Dragon Strike, the Dragon Strike by TSR. Hey, this is also Dragon Strike game. Dragon Strike game, Dragon Strike game. I'm keeping this one mostly for sentimentality. This one, it wants to be games like Dizzy Dizzy Dinosaur. And Tornado Rex. Where you're basically moving your characters around the board in hopes that this dragon doesn't knock you off. But do you do Dizzy Dizzy Dinosaur? Do you do Dragon Strike? Well, I know what I'm doing. I'm not doing any of those, because again, the gimmick is not fun. So swiping left. Gator Golf is exactly what you think it is. It comes with these little putters, and you try to hit the golf balls into the gator's mouth. I don't even know why I had this anymore. I probably got it so I could play it with my preschool nieces and nephews, but they're older than that now, and these golf clubs are too short for me, so we might as well make sure this finds a good home where it will get used. Swiping left. Shark Mania. Remember how we talked about Dragon Strike and how it's about trying to avoid getting hit by things like Dizzy Dizzy Dinosaur? Well, guess what? That's Shark Mania as well.
It's a shark chopping race. There's no time to waste. Move your pirate down the path. You'll take a splash.
Just roll and run, grab the gold, and hurry up before the shark gets you. Swipe left. So here's an interesting one. Golf Mania. Not terrific art, but you'd be surprised to find out that this game is from the company Fantasy Flight. If you look here, 1997 Fantasy Flight Games. Now Fantasy Flight is much more well-known nowadays for their high-quality components and art and whatnot. But not always. Occasionally, Fantasy Flight, back in the 90s, would come out with some random crazy game that they thought was fun enough to make it worthwhile publishing. But you know what? This game is just so ugly. I am embarrassed to even have it in my collection. Swipe left. Malarkey. Another case of, why is this box so big? You're taking up too much shelf space. Because realistically, it's just a whole bunch of cards and tokens, but this game really wants to take up more space than is necessary. But Malarkey's kind of like Baldur's Dash. It's one of those classic Baldur's Dash games where you have to come up with what you think is the truth, and then people vote for what they think the real truth is, and if they vote for yours, then you get the point. But here, it's like random facts that you have to come up with. For instance, how do they put the holes in macaroni in other pasta? So everyone comes up with some type of lie of how it's done. Why are their lights underneath the bottom steps of escalators? Interesting. Which one is the real answer? I have had an amazing time, and Baldur's Dash-type games are fantastic. Now realistically, we have Malarkey, but there's Fibbage.
Some seriously strange facts are missing their important bits. Just fill in the blank with an answer that might fool your friends into thinking it's true. That's right, did I mention your phone or tablet is your controller? Okay, now's the moment of truth. All you have to do is find the truth while avoiding your friends' lies. And you'll win big.
And that makes it much easier, even though everyone is required to have a phone to play Fibbage online. So do I get rid of Malarkey because Fibbage beats it? What if there's a power failure, and we can't play Fibbage? Well, we could do Malarkey then, but will that ever happen? Man, I'm torn. Because I've had a lot of good memories of Malarkey, so there's some sentimentality. Specifically, I played it with my younger cousins, Joanne, Eric, and Rachel and their friends, and they came up with some hilarious stories. This game is too fun not to play with kids that are pre-teen. And a lot of pre-teen kids may not have phones yet because of their parents doing their parenting thing. So you know what? Man, I don't know. This is a tough one. Fudge! I better err on the side of caution and keep it for now, because I don't even know who's gonna buy this. Like, who's gonna buy Malarkey from me? I don't know. So maybe I keep it. So here's the end result of the mid to later 90s. A lot of swipe left, and the only one that I'm keeping, even with reservation, is a Malarkey. So that's pretty much gonna do it for this episode of Too Many Games in a Room. So how did I do? Let me know. Would you have picked games differently than I would've? And would you want the games that I'm getting rid of? That's more important, because I'm trying to get rid of these things, and they need to find some good homes. Is that good home yours? Again and again, let me know in the comments as you watch this fast-forward video of me putting my keeps back into my in-wall game shelf. Look at me struggle. Hey, please like, subscribe or die, share the shit out of this episode, and once again, thank you for watching. Too Many Games in a Room.